Well, good morning, everyone. Welcome to the meeting of the Minnehaha County Commission. I'd like to start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) at the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So it's just a reminder to everyone to silence their cellphones. And meeting documents are available for review down next to Commissioner Heiburger. It's a little bit unusual this morning because we have Commissioners Benega and Karski on the telephone with us today. We don't do this very often, but they are both out of town and were gracious enough to call in. And I think that they will be on the phone for the meeting at least through the beginning. So we are going to go ahead and do a roll call vote just to show that we have quorum.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Present.
Bar?
Present.
Bender?
Present. Thank you very much. So that will take us to the first item of routine business and entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
A second.
Motion and a second. We're going to do roll call votes until such time as Commissioner Karski and Commissioner Benega have to leave the meeting.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bar?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next item is to approve the commission meeting minutes from June 18, 2019.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Karski?
Aye.
Bar?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next item is bills to be paid in the amount of $2,830,859.97.
Pay the bills.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments?
Madam Chair, includes another $2.4 million going towards the jail construction project.
Okay, thank you. So you have a motion and a second roll call vote, please.
Bar?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. So next item are reports that I'd commend for your review. We've got the Minnehaha County Register of Deeds official statement of revenue for May 2019, the Minnehaha County Juvenile Detention Center report for May 2019, the Minnehaha County Abandoned Cemetery Board Minutes for May 2019, and the Auditor's Office financial reports for 2019. Vicki, if you want to come forward and just go over those briefly, thank you.
Vicki Hewitt from the Auditor's Office, here to talk about the May financial results. Starting out with the general fund cash balance sitting at $20,254,000 noted as the maximum balance that we've had. So, good there. Highway fund cash balance sitting at $12.2 million. And on to expenditures, the total expenditures at $23,404,000. The biggest portion of that, of course, is our personnel expense at $16,200,000, both of those on track budget-wise with last year. And then our other expenses at $7.2 million, so sitting at 38% of budget. Total revenue, $28.4 million, right at 50% of budget. And then the taxes, current tax revenue at $22,895, just slightly behind last year. And then other revenues at $5.5 million, so 40.9% of budget. And soon we will be on to June, halfway through the year. Any questions?
Any questions for Vicki? I'd just like to point out that this is really a high point, one of the high points that we experienced in the year because we just collected all of the revenue for the April tax payments and now we kind of spend that down.
Yes, for sure.
It's a pattern. As you look through these graphs, you can see this is repeated year after year.
Right.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, so that takes us to personnel actions. I'd consider a motion to approve routine personnel actions.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bar?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next item is to consider abatements recommended for denial. Chris Lilla.
Good morning, Chris Lilla, Equalization Office. Before you are four abatements for surviving spouse, I've touched with you on these twice before at other meetings. Initially, the spouse had passed away that was receiving permanent total. There was no surviving spouse law on the books at the time, so the veteran's exemption had gone away. Couple of years later, the surviving spouse law came into effect, but we had no application. We had no knowledge to contact them to say, get in here, let's move you forward. Until 2019 Pay 20, a son was going through paperwork and said, Mom, I think you can get this. And came in and I said, absolutely. We signed him up for 19 Pay 20. I initiated the process on their behalf to recommend for an abatement the 18, the 17, and the 16 years, which were already approved and pushed forward. When that went to the city attorney, the city attorney questioned why we didn't go all the way back to 2010. And my interpretation was there was a limitation, how many years we could go back. It was found that, no, there didn't seem to be a limitation. So I wrote a letter and said, all right, I've done this for you for three years. If you want to go all the way back to 2010, you need to make application. That application was received. So initially then, based on what I was explained and told, I initially recommended to approve those. Since that time, it was deemed that there is a limitation on how far back we can go. So the 10, 11, 12, and 13 years, I am now recommending for denial based on that limitation of state law. The 14, 15, 16, 17, and 18 have already been approved. Those are already done and water under the bridge, abated. And then the 19 Pay 20 is approved at the county boards. She will receive that veteran's surviving spouse exemption moving forward. So these unfortunately, a little confusion. I wanted to deny them. They didn't even want to offer them. And then we offered, had application, I recommended to approve, and then found out we were limited in my original findings. So now I'm reversing my paperwork and recommending denial based on that limitation of codified law.
Other questions for Chris?
Madam Chair, I will vote to uphold the planning, or the Equalization Director's view on this, and so I'll make a motion to deny these.
One second. Thanks, Chris, for your hard work.
Yeah.
Are there other comments? I would just make the comment that I don't think any of us are denying an abatement in a situation like this is not something that's comfortable or something that I think any of us would do if we weren't sworn to uphold the law. And I did have an opportunity to visit with the State's Attorney's Office who provides guidance on legal matters to the county and was able to look at the South Dakota law that does limit how far back we can provide these abatements. So unfortunately, under these circumstances, I feel like we don't have any choice here. So with that, I'd entertain a roll call vote, please.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Yes.
Bar?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, so that takes us to item seven, notices and requests. There are none. Planning and zoning notices, there are none. Nine, petition for compromise of lien, there are none. This is, takes us to public comment. This is our opportunity for public comment. If there's somebody here who'd like to speak about something that's not on the agenda, you can come forward. You need to identify yourself, your name and address, and we keep public comment to three to five minutes per person. So, good morning.
Good morning, people. I am Stephen Ciano. You may have seen me addressing the city. I often do not do so well, but I have done better in my writings to the city, which I've been pushing for public disclosure of, and it's been suppressed. Furthermore, public input there has been suppressed to three minutes, perhaps because certain members of there are involved in crimes against me as a disabled, as a blacklisted disabled veteran since '78. And the VA's been covering it up, and the Navy's been covering it up. When I came here before, mentioned it, I was referred, I believe, to, by Ms. Heiburger, to the Veteran Service Officer for the county. I had dealt with the one previously, Ms. Krupa, and she did nothing for me. So I was not inclined to do that. That seems to be business as usual. Standard operating procedure is on every level, from the VA to, well, the federal to the local. The situation has been covered up in reprisal for my efforts to make public, well, and to go through with my actual disability, PTSD since '78. I was, I was told it was in reprisal. I was falsely declared, I got PTSD. They know that it was confirmed. They overruled that using another county, city entity, Southeastern Behavioral Healthcare, to falsely declare me delusional and then to add to that incompetent whereby they apparently stole in my name reportedly $300,000 to First Premier Bank, whose president and CEO I contacted and I got no response from. So I sought help from city council, the Human Relations Department. I've been discriminated against for my beliefs initially. And then I was labeled homosexual and attacked for that, and that's what caused my breakdown in '78. And then there was the cover-up of that ever since. This is what's going on. I see criminal acts and I understand you people are going to be addressing diverting, taking money from people for crimes. And there's big crimes being, going on, city, county, state, and federal to support this discrimination against me. And it has been life-threatening. I'm doing better now, and I hope to do a lot better. And maybe I will again check with the county Veteran Service Officer because DAV and all those other, the American Legion, paralyzed veterans, they're just like cheerleaders for the VA. The VA takes possession, blacklisting somebody, they just go along with it. And the people in the hospital, they've been well aware of the situation when it was life-threatening. They had the documentation, they covered it up. So we've got a big cover-up going on here, and I hope that somebody's going to address it. Oh, by the way, somebody else that spoke at a city council wound up getting arrested for stalking. I got worried. It's like, maybe I'm next because I keep pursuing this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else here today for public comment, an item that's not on our agenda? All right. That takes us on to regular business. And the first item for regular business is to consider a resolution to opt-out of tax limitations in the amount of $6.5 million. Carol Muller, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Muller, Commission Office. Before you today is consideration of a resolution for an opt-out of $6.5 million. It's a big deal. And I have the honor and the privilege of working with each of you who take this to heart and struggle with these kind of decisions that you need to go through and make. As you consider this, one of the things that I think would be good for the public to know is just a real short note about your involvement with the building of the budget. And each of you serve as liaisons to different departments, and I know that departments all reach out to you during the building of their budget and putting together for input. So even before the budget hearing started, you have all been through that budgets quite a bit of times and along with several meetings even before that happens. We are also in an employer as the county, and we feel the challenge of low unemployment just as every other employer does in the county and in the city. One of the things that's facing us this year is a 15% increase in health insurance. We've been fortunate since 2014 to have 0% interest, 0% increase in three years. Those are outstanding numbers. But unfortunately, we just happen to have a lot of things that are happening this particular year as you do that. You will note that the new positions that you have approved are all related to public safety, and these are the things that we are charged statutorily with in order to do. We are the arm of the state. And as such, we're responsible for public safety. Nobody else in the county does jails, nobody else in the county does prosecution, nobody else in the county, no local funder pays bills that the judges say pay them for us. So we have a lot of responsibility for that. You are also the tax collecting arm, not just for the county, but also for the cities, the school district, and the state of South Dakota. Very little money that people pay here actually stays here. I would point that out because many times we just see the money going to the county on there. You can only do what you are allowed the ability to do during, by statute, whether that is services that you provide, and that's also by revenue. In the past few decades, and as always, the ability for you guys to find additional funds always comes down to opt-outs. And you've talked to legislators over the past about those types of things. We've seen some small levels of relief that we have had, and those are very appreciative of that. But 74% of our general funds come from property tax. That is a huge burden that goes on there. You all recognize that, and as such, you're very judicious. Would like to point out today also that of that 6.5, your goal, your plans is to make that last for several years. You have a history of doing that. The last one lasted several years, three, four years. I think there maybe even have been one year when you didn't access any of the money because you didn't need to have it at that time. So before you today is a $6.5 million opt-out. I will share the number with you that for 2020, that if you were to take $1.9 million, which is what you've been discussing at this point as you've gone through the budget hearings, to the taxpayer, the impact is $6.70 per $1 million on a $100,000 value. How that translates to money out of our pocketbook? $150,000 house would see their taxes increased by $19.10. A $200,000 house would increase by $25.46. So with that, before you is your resolution, and we look forward to your discussion and questions.
Thank you very much. Your comments?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Bar.
We've worked really hard on our budget, as we have actually for most of my 13 years on this job. And when, when we opt-out, we don't do it because it makes us happy. In fact, facing the voters every couple of years, we all want to be seen as thrifty as possible. That said, when the time comes where it's necessary to opt-out, it's our job to do that. And in the same way that, you know, a lifeguard might have to jump in the water or a police officer may have to fire his pistol, it's our job to do this. And I, we have invited people to come to our budget meetings. We didn't really have any, anyone come. And certainly, we would be happy to have wisdom from our fellow citizens as we go after these issues. As Carol pointed out, we only get 13 cents on the dollar that we collect from property tax. 70 cents goes to the schools, and the rest goes to the cities. We are just the arm of government where people go to do business. We're the service station for government. You come here to pay your taxes, you come here to get your wedding license, you come here to bail your brother out of jail. All these things are at the county. You don't go to City Hall to pay your property taxes. You don't go to Pier to get your brother out of jail. It's the county that has given these burdens, and the burdens are added on every year. Certainly, we've had some help from the state in the last few years with access to some of the alcohol tax. We get about $600,000 a year now, which five years ago, we got nothing. But I truly believe that the alcohol tax, or the cost of alcohol to the county is more like $10 million a year. But we're not allowed to tax alcohol. And anyway, that's my statement, and I, I'm proud of you guys for the work that you've done.
Commissioner Heiburger?
As Jeff said, and Commissioner Benega, or Bender, it's always difficult to do any type of opt-out, and I think I've been involved with at least, I think this is my second opt-out that I've done while I've been here. And they're not easy. I'm also having an increase on my own personal taxes. Two years ago, we had a group of businessmen from our community come in and look at everything we do. And they, when they came back with their findings, they said, you guys are being very conservative, you are running a business, if it's, you want to call it a business very well, and that there's no way we can make it on the amount of money that we've been allocated by state statute, and that we would continue to opt-out in order to make financial sense in our budget. And most of our spending goes towards state statute, which, of law enforcement and our court services. And according to our paper, 94% of our general fund goes towards those expenses, and that's mandated. We don't have a choice.
Commissioner Karski and Benega, I want to make sure you guys have an opportunity to say something if you want to. I know it's a little awkward when you're on the telephone.
I will just say that, just as Commissioner Benega, that the group as a whole and the department heads have worked extremely hard in trying to keep the budget numbers as close to the minimum that we can. The unfortunate thing that we deal with that's already been discussed is that we're seeing double-digit growth in public safety-related issues and court services and legal issues that we are responsible for by statute, and our revenue sources are limited to 3% or whatever the cost of living is increased, which this year is 2.4. So comparing that 2.4% against double-digit growth in public safety-related issues frankly will not economically work, and this is our only choice, to be able to maintain the public service levels and the legal system and the court-related expenses that we're responsible for. So I appreciate everybody's hard work in keeping it to what it is. The $2 a month on a $150 home is our answer to our fiscal responsibilities, and I do appreciate everybody's efforts in keeping it at that level.
Thank you.
And this is Dean Karski. I just want to jump on that wagon of, you know, it is the criminal justice. The whole realm of that, what we have to fund that is driving it, not to, not that we're doing a poor job of managing that part of the budget or the people that are in charge of that are, it's just growing when you look at the charges, the people in jail, and the sheer volume of stuff going on. We have to take care of that. We do have to be tough on crime. If you look at the other part of our budget, our register deeds, our equalization, and all those other departments that so many of our taxpayers deal with, maybe once a year, but they expect good service when they come in. That part of our budget has been growing at a rate less than what our revenues are growing. So we're doing a good job of managing those parts. We're using technology. We're using people properly. So our staff and our department heads are doing a fantastic job in that, just to emphasize that that part of our budget is actually growing at a rate less than what our revenues are. So it is helping offset the other side. We, we have to make the tough decision, and I'm willing to do that today.
Thank you very much. You know, I don't want to repeat a lot of the information that's been provided. It's all information that we've worked hard to analyze and make sure that we are doing everything we can because honestly, I mean, not, none of us sleep well at night when we know that this is what we have to do. This is not something any of us really relish. But I think we, when I talk to folks and I explain the criminal justice side of the equation and the, and the concerns that, the needs that we have to meet, I think most people think, you know what, one of the great things about living in Minnehaha County is that I generally feel safe at night, you know? I still have friends that don't lock their doors at night, you know? Not that I advocate that. But it is, it is a place where we feel safe and we feel good about raising our kids. And part of that is keeping up the other side of the equation. I visited with a legislator on Sunday who expressed some sympathy for what we are doing here today and acknowledged that, you know, we can't control some of the bad behavior. Some of it's coming in from outside of our state. As, you know, the recent shooting at 1:00 in the afternoon showed, and the gentleman was arrested out of state now. And so there, there are issues that we are charged with, and even though I haven't slept great the last couple of weeks, I'm confident that this is the decision that we need to make. And I'm also confident that the history of this commission is that even when we have an opt-out, we don't go and empty our piggy bank right away. We are, we are judicious and we try to make it last as long as we could. I think last year, we all thought we were going to have to do an opt-out last year, and we worked hard on our budget, and we were able to make do with the amount of money that we had left in our opt-out. But, you know, this year, we knew, we knew, and we've been saying since we approved the budget last year, that there was going to have to be an opt-out this year. And so I'm hopeful, and the projections from our Auditor's Office are right in line with what the Financial Action Network said, is that this opt-out should get us four, five years, hopefully. But it continues to be a fact that opt-out is going to be a bigger and bigger part of our percentage since we are capped by state law right now, and our, and our revenues just really are not meeting the rate that the expenses and the criminal justice side are rising. So with that, unless anybody else has any other comments, I'd call for a roll call vote.
We need to have a motion.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, there you go. Thank you.
I'm sure I would make a motion to approve the proposed opt-out for, is it 6.5 million? 6.5?
That ain't good.
So motion and a second. Now that we have a motion and a second, we can do a roll call vote. Thank you, Olivia.
Karski?
Yes.
Bar?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. So Commissioner Karski and Commissioner Benega, I wasn't sure if you guys are going to stay on or not. I really appreciate you guys taking time out of your schedule, out of town, to call in for this meeting this morning.
Oh, hang on.
Perfect.
I can hang on for a little, a little while also.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, that takes us to item 11. It's a public hearing and second reading on a text amendment to the 1990 revised zoning ordinance for Minnehaha County. Kevin Hookman, good morning.
Good morning. Kevin Hookman, County Planning Department. As you noted, this is a second reading for updates to sign ordinance. I do have a very long PowerPoint that I don't intend on showing the entire thing. It has the entire ordinance, so if, when we get to questions, we can look up portions and see it on the screen. This ordinance process started a long time ago with staff reviewing the sign ordinance with the State's Attorney's Office. We brought it to the first, to the Planning Commission in February 2019, worked with them on a few months reviewing different changes and revisions and possibilities, and finally brought a final draft of the sign ordinance on May 20. The Planning Commission reviewed that final draft and unanimously voted to approve the staff's sign revisions. So the sign ordinance is really multiple parts within the ordinance. There are five different sections, articles in the ordinance that will be changed if this is adopted, and you can see them up there. Article 1110, which is the Red Rock Corridor Overlay District. There are, the primary changes in the Red Rock Corridor are the off-premise signs. Currently, off-premise signs are not allowed in the district, and this would increase or allow off-premise signs, but allow minimally with the similar requirements as what's allowed in like the A1, or agricultural districts, zoning districts. So it'd be a small sign. I can't give you the right, the exact dimensions right now, I had to look it up. But it'd be a smaller sign. It's not going to be big 200-square-foot signs, and then it would be dependent on what road it's on. It'd be smaller if it's on a gravel road versus on the highway. The Additional Use Regulations section has these changes in The additional use regulations section has these changes in the home occupation sign allowances. Currently, it's allowed only two square feet on a house and four square feet for a major home occupation. The home occupations, with houses being really far off the, the road in the county, two square feet is, is probably not enough. So we have allowed up to thirty-two square feet for a home occupation, for a major home occupation. Agricultural tourism signs, we're ma, there's some revisions to that to make that more clear on when and where signs can be placed for agricultural tourism as well. Then the on-premise sign section, which is probably the biggest part of the sign ordinance, there have been changes to the allowable signs in the agricultural residential zoning districts. And the major changes with this would be that we tried really hard to get rid of content-based sign requirements. So that part of the sign ordinance that says, "You can only have the name of your business and an arrow on the sign and nothing more," well, that regulates the content on the sign. And what we need to do is regulate the size and the placement of the sign and not what it reads. So that's where the main change has been done in that agricultural residential zoning districts. In addition, this is the first time that the county is proposing regulations for electronic message signs. So the big, like, digital billboards or digital signs, putting some requirements on how bright the sign can be and where they can be placed in according to like residential nearby and that sort of thing. And then there's a new section proposed to clarify when building permit is required. The off-premise signs remains largely similar to where it was before, but it does change what is allowable in the agricultural zoning district and recreational conservation districts as well. And then definitions are changed according to new parts of the ordinance and consolidation. And as I said, this is a zoning text amendment. It is a public hearing, a second reading. I have a PowerPoint with the whole ordinance for, available for questions. We can look those up. And I'm available for questions now.
Any questions for Kevin? Commissioner Heiburger?
Just a comment. I know, Kevin, you've been working on this for a long time ago because I remember years ago when one of our civil attorneys, who has now left us, sat down with a couple of us and talked about all the concerns that we had. I will have to say, a lot of things have been redlined, which I think it's always nice to see, lessening the government involvement in what we're doing in the public. And I think that there's been some really positive changes, and I appreciate all the work that you've done because you did a lot. There's a lot.
Any other? Commissioner Barth?
Man, I'm sure. I think until you start looking for signs, you really don't realize how pervasive they are. You know, how many of us have seen a Pioneer seed corn or perhaps, you know, a semi-permanent yard sign or garage sale sign or, you know, a fencing company's name on a fence? All these are signs. And when you drive around, if you're looking for them, wow, they're all over.
All right, thank you. All right, so this is a public hearing. So if there's anyone here that's opposed to these changes in the ordinance, if they'd like to come forward and speak? Anyone opposed? All right, seeing none, I guess I'd look for a motion.
Make a motion to approve the text amendment of the two thousand nineteen revised zoning ordinances for Minnehaha County zoning, rezoning.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other comment? I also would just like to thank the Planning and Zoning Department and the State's Attorney's Office as I know hours and hours went into this, and I think it is a very good product that we've come up with. So, okay, roll call vote, please.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Okay, that takes us to item twelve, which is to consider a request from the Sioux Falls J.C.'s for financial support for the two thousand nineteen Fourth of July fireworks celebration at the W.H. Lyon Fairgrounds. It's that time of year again. Good morning.
I'm dead, Mommy. I haven't had a hand for you.
Good morning. You have Travis and Grace Arnesson. Thank you so much for allowing us to come. As you know, we put on the annual fireworks show. At the fairgrounds. This is the only free public event in the area. The event costs about thirty-five thousand. And that includes face painting, inflatables, card making for troops, raffles, municipal band, vanguard flyover, Phil Baker, donut decorating, Mr. Twister, reptiles, fire slash hula hoop dancers, temporary tattoos, and a petting zoo, and of course, the fireworks. So as you can see, this is an overall family event. We do our best to keep it free to the public. Because we believe that our men and women have already paid the price for this holiday. So we want to honor them. I'm here for a couple of things. One. Public support. We would appreciate all the people coming and attending. To help honor our men and women. This is a horrible question to ask after opt-out. Last year, you had slightly mentioned. Maybe possibly putting toward, a thousand dollars towards this event. I understand your budget is really tight. I would appreciate anything you can do. Three of your members have?
Given.
Given. Personally. I can't tell you how much that means to me. I have a list of sponsors. If I may put that up. A couple aren't on there that I got when I walked in. Then we have a statement about last year's rain out.
Let me flip it over. I think it's upside down, yeah. Thank you.
We have some awesome sponsors that have stuck with us through the years. And last year, when the fireworks didn't happen, we were worried about the support. Most of our sponsors are still sticking with us. What most people don't know is that all the activities did happen throughout the afternoon and early evening. The main event, the, the main event. The main event, the activities didn't, did happen throughout the evening. As the municipal band and the vanguard flyover were the only things, and the fireworks canceled. When we looked at the parking that we would be available because of the rain and the volunteers that could actually make it to the rain date, we knew that we had to do our due diligence for our organization, our sponsors, and our community. That being said, we did have some donors that opted out this year and/or decreased the amount of sponsorship. At this point, we are roughly ten thousand short. All of our numbers are not in yet, as we have calls out to some more sponsors, and we will have some miscellaneous invoices to pay for like food for volunteers. The fireworks could have shot in the rain. However. We had a lightning strike ten miles away. And when you have five thousand people. In a metal grandstand. For some reason, our security team wasn't very fond of that. That's why we had to evacuate. Any questions or comments?
Are there any questions, Travis? I just would like to thank you again for coming this year. It's always kind of a highlight for me when you guys come just because I love this time of year, and when you're here, I know it's here. So I really appreciate all the work that you do. I think everybody understands when you have to cancel events. We've all been at events, whether at the fairgrounds or at high school football games, where they have to be canceled because of weather, and that's just part of living in this great part of the world. And hopefully, I see that Kello's here today, and then hopefully they'll be able to help get the word out about the event, not only so people attend, but that maybe people will be able to help you with some of the financial needs that you still have. I think for the commission, as you noted, it's a really difficult year for us, and we just don't have a lot of discretionary money that we are able to contribute to nonprofits at this point. But I am glad to see that a number of commissioners have personally helped you out. So I wish you the best of luck. It's a great event, and I really want to thank you guys for coming today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So that takes us to item thirteen, which is to authorize the chairperson to sign the second renewal to the food service agreement between Minnehaha County Juvenile Detention Center and Summit Foods. Jamie, good morning.
Good morning. Jamie Gravitt, Director of JDC. Before you use the second yearly renewal, we have to follow all the guidelines of the National School Lunch Program. We use the mandatory contracts, and we can renew four times before we RFP again. The increase is one point eight percent over last year. I'd ask that you support this and, and approve this, and then the final step is sending it to the state for final approval.
Okay. Any questions for Jamie?
Man, I'm sure I'd make a motion to approve this contract modification.
Second.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a couple of seconds, so that's, that's good. Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Next item is to authorize the chairperson to sign Change Order Number One with black top paving for the J parking lot construction project. Carol Mulner, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Yes, before you today is a change in parking lot J, which is the new one that's being developed over at Fourth and Minnesota Avenue. This is Change Order Number One, and it's, you may notice it's about ready to be striped. So we've, we're doing really well with this. The change order is for two thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars. The majority of that money is because we had a lot of rain, and they had to scar it up, scrape it up, and let it dry out and recompact it. So that's the issue of why that's at.
Any questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
So move, Benega?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other comments? I just would note this will be a great thing. Anybody who's been here at the county, we are, parking is tight around here. And so it's great to have this additional parking option for folks. Commissioner Heiburger?
I think, Carol, correct me, is it about seventy new spots? Yes, about seventy new spots that we desperately needed.
Correct. All right. So we have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski? Karski? Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
I'll try Karski one more time. Karski? Bender?
Bender, aye. So motion passes four to one. It appears maybe Commissioner Karski left the meeting.
Okay, that takes us to item fifteen. Consider a motion to approve the hire of an Alliance program full-time caseworker position funded through the MacArthur Foundation Safety and Justice Challenge Grant. Carrie Benz, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm before you this morning. The county was fortunate enough to be able to be awarded a grant through the MacArthur Foundation through the Safety and Justice Challenge. With this grant comes the opportunity to receive seven hundred thousand dollars over the course of the next couple of years. The first half of that has already dropped, and the county has those funds. And the second half will drop coming up in November. With these funds, a committee has been put together, and they have identified that a portion of those funds, eighty-eight thousand of that, they would like to allot to hire a case manager who can do the intensive case management with those individuals who frequent the detox, the sobering center, and obviously end up in jail quite frequently for those low-level offenses. So our request is for you to approve that hire. It would be a grant-funded position. The base salary would be the forty-five-five ninety-three, as we would have hired even in our department as a regular staff. It would allow us to expand the population that we're currently working with. I think the population that we would be working with through this grant and through this position would allow us to really start working with the group that we will be working with when the triage center is up and running. And so I think it gives us a jumpstart. It allows us to gather a lot of data and be able to do more tracking of these individuals, to identify what their needs are and how best to serve them in our community efficiently and effectively. I know Nathaniel is here. He's sat very quietly. He's actually with USD and is going to be helping us with tracking data. So if you have any questions, he was good enough to come this morning and be able to answer some of those questions as well. But our request is for the approval to hire an individual who would fill this position and begin working with us as soon as possible for the next fourteen to sixteen months.
Any questions?
Just have an additional comment.
Commissioner Heiburger?
Yeah, Nathaniel works for USD.
Yes.
And some of the grant money that we had was used to pay for a portion of Nathaniel's contract to do data research for us and stuff, and-
I think we'll go ahead and still do a roll call vote.
Bar?
Aye.
Benega?
Okay, maybe Commissioner Benega left as well, then.
Hiberger?
Aye.
Karski?
Bender?
Aye. So motion passes unanimously for the folks that are still in attendance. Okay, so that takes us to item 16, to authorize the chairperson to sign a lease extension between Minnehaha County and the First National Bank. I have Jason Gierman down. I'm not sure if there's anyone here that's going to present on this this morning.
Craig, can you stop?
Madam Chair, I think this is a pretty routine thing that we do every year. I wonder if we can't just approve it in the absence of Jason Gierman, and I would make that motion. I see Craig has approached the podium.